Good evening, welcome to the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. First on our agenda, I'd like to discuss the decision draft of 460 Hillside Avenue, it's the Dish Wireless LLC was the applicant. Everybody has seen the draft that was prepared and circulated. And subsequent to the circulation of that decision, the applicant indicated that there will not be a generator outside in the parking lot. So we had imposed a few conditions on the generator. And I thought it was substantive enough that we should have at least have our first discussion on a decision under the new process of deciding these decisions that obviously we should remove the condition on the generator since they're not having a generator. And the other thing I asked that we included all the requirements that we asked for, especially the engineering reports and affidavits. Many times, even though they're filed after the hearing when we requested them, we have a notation in the decision that they were filed after the hearing. So if you go look at this decision in three or five years, did we require an engineering report? Well, where was it? Well, now we know we have everything. So so I think there my recommendation is that as Daphne has edited this, that we accept the edits, removing the condition of the generator, including the reference that the applicant is not going to install an outdoor generator. And that we list all these late filed documentations and affidavits.
And for the record, they they are in complete compliance with all the things that you requested.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. That seems reasonable, John, to remove testing, sound testing requirements for generator if one doesn't exist.
Okay.
The question though, that are the specific requirements for sound testing in the the regulation, I'm sorry, the bylaw, or something we've adopted over time?
It's it's in the bylaw and it's also sort of comes down from the FCC requirements. So remember, the FCC assumed jurisdiction of all these things and municipalities adopted bylaws to sort of model themselves under the FCC jurisdiction. And I believe there is a sound testing requirement. And if it isn't.
Do you what I have? I have in front of me six, seven, three, three special permit. Do you know where which one? Because I'm not easily finding the sound testing requirement. I know it's something that as a policy matter, we've 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 sought.
We've we've always done that. Whether it's in the bylaw, I'd have to review the bylaw myself. I don't have it in front of me. But it it my experience, my memory, it came from neighbors that originally butters or neighbors were concerned about the radioactive concerns of the radio waves. And then wherever we've had a generator, whether it's on a rooftop or next to a cell service. So it wouldn't be necessarily in the the section on communications devices and towers. It's more a noise ordinance or outdoor generators. I don't know where it is. Maybe Joe knows offhand where it might be.
It has been it has been a requirement that you have imposed for all the generators. We had a whole cluster.
No, 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 I know. It's the question is, is it imposed by the bylaw or practice? And that was the question. And I I don't know offhand.
Okay, but anyway, I guess I would just say for the record that if it's not clearly set forth in the bylaw, I think we should sort of formalize this informal policy of requesting sound testing for generators.
I think we have. I don't think there's a mechanism to put it in our own rules. And I don't if it's not in the bylaw, it's not in the bylaw, but it's basically when you have a generator that goes on and off once a week or whatever. And it's on the border of a residential area. We don't know what it's going to sound like until we they install it. So
So John, I'm agreeing. I just want to just for to the extent this is being recorded, that this is appears to have been a policy of ours, and I'm supporting that policy for all the reasons that you've articulated.
Yeah, it's a policy we've always had. But it's a it's a good question of whether there's something in the bylaw dealing with sound and noise emanating from a generator. I don't know offhand. Joe, do you know?
So I'm just looking at one section of the bylaw that basically says any applicant seeking to construct or install any any external noise producing equipment ancillary to the antennas shall use best efforts to minimize the noise. Goes on a little bit more than it says the use of batteries as backup power sources preferred over generators. But that's all I see.
Give us a site please to the bylaw. What's?
So that would be six point seven point five design criteria. Subpart P as a Peter.
Beyond that, though, we've always imposed that whenever there's a rooftop generator, not necessarily for cellular or wireless equipment. There many people have backup generators. So I think let's take a look at the bylaw over the next month and let's just see where it is. But it is our practice. Howard supports the continuation of the practice. But in this decision, there's no generator, there's no need for it. So if everybody's in, we have a consensus. Then the decision that Daphne has circulated is the final one. And we'll go proceed to have that executed as discussed at the at Daphne's office. Okay?
Well, I will go ahead and print those out tonight and I will put them in the folder. So they're here starting after this meeting.
Good, excellent.
All right. And the next thing on our agenda would be the minutes and of our December meeting, has everybody read the minutes had a second as is their motion to approve the minutes from our December.
Go move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue hearing. At this particular point, I'm going to virtually turn the gavel over to Howard. And for this virtual hearing, it's a real hearing, but on on Zoom and say farewell, I'm going to sign off and I think Nick will too. And we'll see you in February. Bye bye.
Thank you. Thank you, John and Nick.
Okay.
Okay, so the the second and final item on the agenda tonight is the the request by the appellant at six eighty eight Central Ave to revoke the permit. I'm going to formally read the official announcement of the the appeal. That Holly Clark, Greg Darish, Robert Demossi, Matthew and Nicole Heidman, Carl Johansson, Anne and Peter Lyons and Elaine Sullivan, applicants applied to the Board of Appeals for an appeal of the building inspector's decision. Permit number BC twenty three one zero zero seven nine issued to Matt Borelli and Needham Enterprise LLC dated September nineteenth, two thousand twenty three for the construction of a childcare facility. This request for the appeal of revocation concludes that the building permit plans on file do not demonstrate that the construction alteration or use as proposed complies with the zoning bylaws as limited by the Dover Amendment. Mass General laws, chapter forty eight, section three. The property is located at six eight eight Central Street Needham in the single residence aid district. This matter has been continued from December fourteenth. And just to just to bring everybody up to date. It's been a month ago. That the we formally closed the proceeding. We started deliberations and we made quite could have been of headway, but certainly we have more work to do. Accordingly, there'll be no public comments tonight or further testimony. This the purpose of the meeting tonight is to publicly deliberate regarding the 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 appellant's request to revoke the building permit for this property. And we have circulated with the great help of town council and Daphne and others a draft decision, several additions, and we would like to tonight to generally discuss that and then reach a conclusion and then take a vote. And just to be clear that the vote that we take tonight will have to be unanimous. That all three members have to agree if if this is a vote to revoke the permit. And that's important. So that that having been said, I just wanted to sort of highlight some of the the really that what we feel or what I feel are the major issues. I strongly encourage the board members to participate actively and to give to give their input. So that the so there's roughly several several issues to consider tonight. The first might be then really no particular order as we approach this, but should the building permit have been stayed while the appellant's pursued an appeal in the Land Court case? The second major issue to consider is the stormwater management and erosion control. And these are issues that that have been put forth by the appellant's and many of the public comments that we've received. Another important item is whether the lack of a site plan approval of the project is going to be dispositive. Another concern is whether two non residential buildings on one lot is going to be a problem under the zoning bylaw. Other concerns were about environmental testing, landscaping plan, parking requirements, lighting, construction management. And then another threshold question we were going to have that we'll deal with later is does the board have the jurisdiction to hear this appeal? In light of what we've heard is a perhaps somewhat delayed filing of the of the formal application with the filing fee despite a timely filing of what was clearly a notice pleading to put the the board and that relevant members on a notice of of the intent of the appellant within the thirty days. And then finally, the threshold question is the vote that will take whether or not to revoke the building permit. As I said, that that these votes have to be unanimous. Okay, so I I think that we had left the the last meeting in December with Peter, you did a great job to go through many of the the points. And I know Valentina, you had followed up as well and had some concise points. I'll just start the the conversation. And then we'll we'll we're going to jump in. But the the first one that I I was focused on and somewhat troubled by, but I've come to resolution is the of the apparent prohibition of having two non residential buildings. Let me can read this clearly. Having two non residential buildings on one lot in a single residence aid district. That would appear to be prohibited under the zoning bylaw. But just me speaking personally, I I felt that applying the bylaw to the 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 facts at hand, and it has to do with the barn. There was tremendous concern about the the barn. And I think that there was expressed testimony that there is a written lease in place. I think it was a long term lease that the barn be used by the childcare facility to house to store equipment that would be used. And that we had some specific examples. I thought some pretty detailed testimony. So in my opinion, I felt that even though there is a prohibition on having two non residential structures in a single residence district, I felt that applying the Dover Amendment that the town again, in my opinion, does not have a compelling interest in light of the testimony in of the in of the building commissioner's statements, at least twice. That that a that if if the accessory use is not related to the childcare that it would be a shut down. That that barn use would be shut down. It could not be permitted. So based upon all that, I didn't feel that the town had a compelling interest to bar the accessory barn use being used for the the daycare center. So at that point, I just would like to get the other board members to 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 weigh in on that that point.
I can chime in. I think certainly from all that testimony that that we heard. I agree with you, Howard, that we we heard sufficient the testimony saying that the use is going to be an accessory use certainly went through a lot of examples of the kinds of items that would be stored there and the reason for the need for such a large storage storage facility as the barn. Certainly, it seemed like that the use would be accessory or ancillary to to the the daycare center. So yeah, tend to agree there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And Peter, what are you feeling on this issue?
Unmute, Peter. Peter, could you unmute, please?
I maybe I don't want to. I I, as I said last time, I I to me, the use of the barn for use as accessory to the childcare facility cloak it with the same protection under the Dover Amendment is the rest of the site. And I think that the the use of the barn for the those purposes is not going to be prohibited by three, two, one.
Okay, right. So it seems like there's general consensus on that that threshold question. And we appreciate all everyone participating. Peter, do you do you want to weigh in on some of the other issues? I know you you did go through that last month. But now we have a written decision in front of us and we've grappled with some of the nuances to it. Do you want to start? We're just wanted to you want to want to lead us in parking? We can weigh in on that?
Not, honestly, Howard, I pretty much said everything I had to say last month. I mean, I I you know, I've I've looked at it again. I I actually sat and watched both hearings in full. And and I haven't seen anything that changes my position from from last month on on the various issues. I mean, I can walk through them if you want, but I I think I'd rather hear what you and Valentina have to say because you know, I think I pretty much said my piece on this. And I'll be happy to chime in if I have anything to add.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah.
Valentine, do you want to weigh in on parking? You in concurrence that 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 the the bylaw was not, it looks like it's section five point one, two required parking. It does not seem to have been violated in this instance. It appears to be ample parking.
Yeah, I do. I do agree with that. And I think we've it kind of through testimony through Joe Prodnak kind of reaffirmed that. It seems that the number of parking spaces, the thirty parking spaces is consistent with what the planning board approved as well. So I I I think that did not seem like that would raise an alert. Why it wouldn't be consistent with the bylaw there.
Okay, another point that was discussed and just to sort of highlighted for the purpose of this deliberation tonight is that the stormwater management and erosion control plan. There seems to have been ample evidence if the these plans were not submitted initially that the the town in its engineering department and other resources has closely looked at this. And I think they've established that there is an erosion of plan that appears to be effective as well as stormwater management, although not required by the bylaw. The applicant seems to have presented these plans and made revisions that the building commissioner has requested. So get on that one. I I don't have a concern that there was a problem with with the stormwater management or erosion control plan. And Valentina, you feel that way as well? You feel differently?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And probably also say that that's not one of the areas that is regulated by the Dover Amendment. So agree there.
I agree.
Okay, and so that there are other concerns raised that that when the initial permit was 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 filed, that the intended use of the barn really was not clearly articulated. Nor was and so that but there's been, I think, significant testimony by certainly the applicants, strike that, but by the 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 holder of the building permits, the the developers attorney and others testified of the use of the barn. There's a lease in place. And and I think the building inspector was very strong that if there was a violation, he would be monitoring that. And the eyes and ears of the community would would bring any concerns or or failure to comply with that at his attention. But I I feel again that that's not something that would be grounds to revoke the the building permit. We agree in that. And then also, the another issue that that stood out to me was the 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 lack of environmental testing. And the Board of Health has weighed in repeatedly, very clearly that they can only act upon information. And there's been no reported spills, twenty one east spills that they can act upon. And that that even though there's some general concern about the previous use of of this property that may have had stored vehicles and maybe some oil, but there was no apparent spill that would have triggered any review. And that this board, the zoning board, doesn't have authority to deny a building permit for for that. In that the the officials in the town, the the health department have refused or commented that they have no comment. So again, I don't see that as an issue to change the result of the issuance of the building permit. I just wanted to hear that from others if we could.
Yeah, I mean, I I have to say that you know, that I know you've been troubled by that. I'm I'm troubled by it as well. And the 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 appellant's have several times raised that issue in a number of different contexts. But the bottom line is for purposes of this hearing, I don't think that we have the jurisdiction to revoke the building permit based on those issues. So I agree with you, Howard. But I just did want to note for the just for the record that I share your concerns about what may or may not have gone on up there.
But just moving along, the next area would be the landscape plan that it appears as if there may not have been a formal plan submitted. There was discussion in an undertaking. Well, first, it doesn't appear that that the the bylaw requires submission of a landscape plan in this context. But that it seemed like the the developer and his staff, his team addressed it. And and it seemed to me that 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 was an issue that's important to the neighbors that there be proper screening and that trees and 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 shrubbery be planted in a way to create the privacy for the neighbors as well as privacy for the daycare center. So again, I didn't think that the landscape issue is one that's a violation of of the zoning bylaw. How about the rest of the board?
I think we beat that up pretty well about whether that's subject to regulation under the Dover Amendment. And and I think we've concluded that it that it isn't, you know, we we all took some comfort from the developers councils, you know, recitation that they would, you know, do what was shown on the plan. And hopefully, that's what will happen. But we don't have the ability to revoke the building permit because of the failure to get an approved landscape plan.
Yeah, I mean, and we discussed this one, I think, quite a bit about what does it mean about open space under Dover Amendment and whether that would include landscaping or not. And kind of went back to Dover Amendment, went back through kind of a testimony and some of the things that we heard. And that is not a defined term. But I think where my thought is, is that open space just refers to whether there is a presence or an absence of a structure on on land. And so I don't think that the term is broad enough to encompass landscaping plan.
Okay, and finally, we lumped the the last two together, lighting and construction management plan. It seemed like in my opinion, that there was sufficient evidence that that there won't be spillover, that the developer was sensitive to it, that there isn't a a a bylaw violation. And that's true for the construction plan. It looks like that they they do have an effort. And I think that's a very big issue with the neighbors that the property that that the developer here to the hours of operation, they take efforts to keep the site clean, locked at night. And and those types of safety features that will be a great concern. So I think that the neighbors along with the building commissioner will be keeping a watchful eye on this project as it develops. Is there something concurrence on that?
Yeah, yes.
So so let's let's talk about a technical issue. We heard testimony from from there was amicus briefed by by a attorney who suggested or argue that while the applicant filed a notice of intent timely within the thirty days of the issuance of the building permit, there was some question whether or not the the applicant filed the it's appeal on the town's form and paid the the fee timely within that thirty days. It looks like that did not happen. Personally, I I feel that when the the applicant filed its notice of intent that that was constructive notice that put the the town on notice. It was circulated in different parts that although not perfect, not not in conformity with the procedural requirement under the town's zoning bylaw, I feel that that there was constructive notice in in that the that nobody was prejudiced by by that lack of exact compliance with the town's bylaw, really in procedure as well. So I I'm and and not moved that 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 the potential procedural defect would 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 prevent this would would allow be create grounds for an appeal, effective appeal. I just want other people to weigh in on that.
Well, I I think it's a different standard because I I think the jurisdictional issue is kind of a black or white issue. I I don't think it's you did enough. But you didn't do everything you needed to. You know, going going back to the last appeal I can remember where the appellant's in fact missed the thirty days and we all looked hard at it with the significance of of that statutory deadline. I I I think that the attorney for the the children's center, you know, made made a very well reasoned argument about why she thought that the failure to file the form and the filing fee was equal in effect to failure to comply with the statutory scheme. But I I don't accept that argument. So it to me, at least, it's not so much to question of there wasn't any prejudice by virtue of their failure to file the form and pay the fee within the thirty days, but but rather they complied with what they had to do within the thirty days by filing that letter with the the clerk, the ZBA and the building commissioner. And I I think the 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 form in the final analysis, the form, I think essentially says, see attached letter. And and the filing fee of two hundred dollars, I think, those to me are very administrative kind of, you know, insubstantial things. The the filing that was done within the thirty days, I think, satisfied the statute. And I think that's sort of the the end of of the inquiry there.
And Valentina?
Yeah, I I went back to forty eight and kind of read section fifteen and how to appeal. And you know, in in the language there is that the petitioner shall file notice of appeal. And I kind of thinking about what that that means, filing a notice and whether that was filed. And I think we had quite a bit of discussions at the last hearing about form over a matter, a matter of reform. I did kind of go back and forth on on that a little bit. But but I do agree there with Peter as well that the what was filed seems to to satisfy the statute based on on what it says.
Okay, well, I think I know the town council's with us and if he thinks that we may have missed something, but I believe we've covered all the important issues and now ready to bring this to three questions to a vote. Is is there any objection to moving forward with the vote? Is there any further deliberation? Hearing none, I I close the the deliberation and move on to the vote. So if I may just pause with the three questions as I as I understand them. And so we'll take a separate vote for each of the three. And then, as as I said, the only way these pass is if the three of us decide unanimously one way or the other. So the first issue is should the building permit have been stayed while the appellant's pursued an appeal of the Land Court case? And so I guess we'll take a formal vote on that. Valentina? Should the building permit have been stayed?
No.
Okay, and Peter?
No.
And Howard? No. Okay, thank you. So we're what we all agree that that is not within the the board's jurisdiction. The second question is a procedural one. Is does the board have jurisdiction to hear this appeal? Where the appellant's initial filing contained a detailed memorandum timely but that the application form But that the application form, uh, in the filing fee was submitted, uh, shortly thereafter, after the thirty day pe- period. So those, so Valentina, do you believe we have jurisdiction to hear this appeal despite this procedural issue?
Yes.
Okay, and Peter?
Yes.
Okay, and Howard also believes that we have jurisdiction. The last and threshold question, uh, uh, I'm going to read it exactly. Should the building permit B C twenty-three, one zero zero seven nine. Issued to Matt Barelli and Needham Enterprise LLC dated September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. For the construction of a childcare facility at one, excuse me, sixteen eighty-eight Central Ave. Be revoked by the zoning board. Because the plan submitted in the application does not demonstrate. That the construction or use proposed complies with the town zoning bylaws as limited by the Dover amendment. Uh, that's Mass General laws forty-eight, section three. So, uh, first, Valentina.
Um, no.
The appeal be revoked, should the building permit be revoked?
No, no, it should not be revoked.
Okay, thank you. And Peter?
No.
Okay, and Howard also believes the, the building permit should not be revoked. So just to conclude, in all three of the threshold questions, the board has voted to support. The issuance of the building permit and not to revoke it. So I, I think that concludes our, uh, charge tonight. I'm going to defer to town council if there's something else that he might add.
Mister Chairman, I think you did that, uh, walked through all of those steps, uh, more or less perfectly. I think I might want to ask that the board, uh, sort of put all that in the form of a motion. Um, just so that there's a motion on, on the record, and I would, I guess, suggest that that would be a motion to, um. Deny the appeal for all of the reasons recited earlier on in your deliberations.
So. Peter, would you, would you just, so moved?
So moved, yep.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, those, uh, in favor, actually, I'm just, so. This is a vote to uphold the issuance of the building permit for all the reasons stated?
Uh, that would be equally, uh, fine. I, I, I framed it in the, in the, in the negative, but I think if you're framing it in the.
No, 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 I, I, so there's, I, I, I don't mean to, I just wanted, so, so you, you, the, the motion that was moved is what, just, just quick summary?
To deny the appeal.
Okay. Okay, so that's the formal motion that's been second, is there, uh, uh, those in favor of. Of, of, of denying, of, 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 of revoking the, the building permit?
No. So the, 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 the appeal, uh, seeks revocation of the building permit, uh, the, if the motion is to deny the appeal. Uh, that would have the effect of upholding, so I guess, how about the, would be framed as follows. Move that the zoning board of appeals, deny the appeal and uphold the issuance of the building permit.
And, and Peter, would you adopt that motion?
Yes.
And Valentina, seconded?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Roll call vote, actually, sorry, since, since we are remote, let's do that as a roll call.
Okay, so Valentina?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Peter?
Aye.
Uh, 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 me as well, aye. So we, we all are, uh, unanimous in supporting the issuance of the building permit. And denying the appeal. Okay, well, thank you, this has been a. Detailed process has been tremendous, uh, commitment really on both sides and by the lawyers and by town council. And by Daphne, it's been a tremendous town effort. I wish all the parties, uh, participating tonight and, uh, the earlier nights, good luck, whatever happens. And we, we, we hope we have fairly and honestly deliberated and thought through these issues. And we, we feel that this is an accurate reflection of how the board feels. Okay, that being said, Daphne, if there's no further business tonight, uh, right, is there no, no further business?
That is true, and all we need.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning tonight, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Roll call, sorry, roll call, let's, roll call vote. All, all, we're on Zoom.
All right, uh.
Okay.
Mister Gold?
Uh, I will move to adjourn.
Uh, Valentina Allison?
Uh, for adjourning.
For adjourning, uh, it's a second.
No, all right. Mister Feenberg?
Aye.
Excellent, okay, that being said, the, 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 the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much, um. And we'll see you soon. Any, any comments, uh, Daphne about meetings coming up?
The next meeting is going to be, um, the next meeting is on February fifteenth, and that will be in person in the child.
Okay, Daphne, I'm not going to make that one, I'll be out of time.
All right.
Okay, great, thank you all, and this has been a, a worthwhile experience, appreciate everyone's diligence.
All right.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Yes, I thank you.
Thank you, good night.